Call to order the meeting of the Wachem County Council for April 22, 2014. Can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Sam Crawford.
Here.
Pete Cremon.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Carl Weimer.
Here. If you'll stand and join me with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick announcements. If you've brought your cellphone with you, if you can put it on silent or vibrate so we don't have a lot of weird distractions, that'd be great. If during either the public hearing or the open session you have papers to hand out, if you can make sure our clerk gets one also, that would be helpful. We just came out of the committee of the whole meeting where we had two different discussions: a discussion with Chief Civil Deputy Prosecutor Daniel Gibson regarding potential flood control zone district property purchase, and a discussion with Executive Laos regarding potential State Street property acquisition. First thing up this evening is a special presentation from the county executive on the state of the county.
Well, good evening, members of council, staff, and citizens. It's my pleasure to be before you again to talk about the state of our county. First, let's review the last 12 months and identify some tasks we've accomplished. Then we'll look at challenges and opportunities for this year, concentrating on where we are focusing our staff and financial resources. In closing, we need to plan for the future. This is an important year as we will produce another biennial budget for 2015-16, allowing us the opportunity to incorporate our vision for the county into the document. I'll identify some opportunities that I believe will be important for us to discuss as we adopt this biennial work plan in November. First, our accomplishments. We completed the final EIS for the proposed jail site, and after review, council approved the purchase of the Ferndale La Bounty Road property in December of 2013. Contracts from all parties for emergency medical services were finalized, keeping the system together as a countywide operation. The executive oversight board and the technical advisory board have begun regular meetings. The Port of Bellingham, City of Bellingham, and your county government forged a partnership to lease the building owned by the port that was used during the Olympics for a unified Wachem County Emergency Operations Center. This will be a state-of-the-art emergency response building for major events and training. Lean training was conducted in Planning and Development Services Department last year, resulting in remarkable time and energy savings in the issuance of building permits. A new records management system was installed in the sheriff's office, and upwards of 500 computers within county government were replaced due to the retirement of the Windows XP operating system. Our email system was upgraded to Microsoft Outlook Exchange, and the replacement of the countywide telephone system is underway. Parks and Recreation Department projects in 2013 include updating the comprehensive park and recreation and open space plan, and receiving final approval from the Washington Department of Natural Resources and the county council for the reconvenance of the Lake Wachem land transfer effective January 20 of 2014. The Health Department, along with several community agencies, was successful in nearly ending homelessness for our honorably discharged veterans, with just under 100% of known homeless veterans being housed. Also, in collaboration with Peace Health and others, a community health improvement plan was completed for the county. The Health Department sponsored training throughout the year for EMS and law enforcement first responders to help intervene with residents suffering from acute symptoms of mental illness. And they worked with the nursing programs at the Wachem Community College and the Bellingham Technical College to provide immunization opportunities in the community for low-income adults. Wachem County is developing a mental health court with the goal of implementation before this year's end. We are sending a team to the National Conference on Specialty Courts to assist them in design and operations planning. Local behavioral health dollars, along with state monies, will fund this learning opportunity. Representatives from several departments will attend and then bring their newfound expertise to the collaborative planning table. Our Public Works Department highlights include enhanced credit card acceptance for ferry passes via the internet, in their office, and on the ferry. We also accomplished the adoption of the environmental impact statement for the Swift Creek Sediment Management Action Plan. The Coronado Fremont Stormwater Phase 1 improvements in the Geneva neighborhood were completed, and the Lake Samish Comprehensive Stormwater Plan was adopted. River and Flood Staff developed a system-wide improvement framework for our levees and convened an interagency stakeholder group of federal, state, and local resource agencies, tribes, and dyking districts, and subzone representatives in 2013. Natural Resources implemented the aquatic invasive species program for motorized boats in Lake Wachem and Samish, along with the City of Bellingham, which was recently expanded to include non-motorized craft for the 2014 boating season. There is now an online course that provides information and incentives for those who successfully complete the program through discounts on their boating inspection fees. The new Lake Wachem watershed phosphorus ordinance was adopted by council in July of 2013. Working with many stakeholders, Public Works staff authored the Permanent Stormwater Management Systems section of the ordinance and conceived the phosphorus-neutral small residential lot stormwater design option. Additionally, our important work continues on the task list for the 2010-through-2014 Lake Wachem management plan. In Planning and Development Services, long-range planning staff coordinated with cities on the 2016 Growth Management Act Comprehensive Plan Updates and facilitated an advisory team to rewrite zoning code to use plain language to improve readability, consistency, and understanding of zoning regulations. PDS continues to facilitate the Gateway Pacific Terminal Environmental Impact Statement in coordination with the Washington Department of Ecology and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Our criminal justice system in Wachem County is very well-run operation. The cooperation exhibited between the Superior Court, District Court, prosecuting attorney, public defender, and sheriff's office continues to impress me. Each has a specific responsibility and mandate, but all realize that working cooperatively with a balanced workload ultimately leads to efficient productivity. I'll cede this opportunity for a detailed report to them for a presentation at a future date. Our financial status is best described as stable. General fund revenue received was at 99.3% of our budget expectation for 2013, while general fund expense was at 92.88 of what was anticipated. Through the end of 2014, the financial health of Wachem County government will follow this trend. The current state budget does not appear to be of additional help to the county government as liquor tax and marijuana tax are not adequately distributed, mental health and criminal justice monies remain tight, and there is very little capital money, capital project money for road improvements. Revised procedures for the collection of property taxes may have a substantial negative impact on our, on our property tax collection rates. The 2015-16 budget will have little capacity for discretionary spending as we anticipate that expenses such as cost of goods, labor step increases, and benefits may outpace revenue. We have designated new expenses in the budget, including the fourth Superior Court judge with staff and the lease cost for the joint operations building at the airport. I remain committed to treating all of our employees fairly, within and outside of our labor contracts. I'm pleased that all of our contracts are approved by labor and management through the end of 2014. Our workforce is stable, outside of the ongoing need for succession planning in light of the retirement potential in our present workforce. There is a need to continue the funding balance between the criminal justice cost centers and the departments that support them. There is a need to continue to streamline government to provide as many services as possible, as efficiently as possible. To accomplish this, it will take a long-term commitment to training and improve technology to give our great workforce the best opportunity for success. My priorities for the near future, in addition to the preparation and presentation to the council of the biennial budget for the 2015-16, include the successful completion of the courtroom for the fourth Superior Court judge, the installation of a new countywide phone system by early 2015, and advancing the ongoing work of our other major projects throughout the organization. All county departments will continue to implement projects previously approved by council and will continue the planning necessary to help us create the vision for the future of Wachem County. Specific items I believe we absolutely need to address in the next budget include enhanced natural resource planning and project implementation, increased code enforcement capabilities, and a long-term commitment to the mental health court. Some projects I will be considering in the development of the next biennial budget work plan include a new records management system for PDS and Public Works, renovation of the courthouse exterior, a renewed focus on economic development opportunities, a new Wachem County website platform, and the upgrading of the audiovisual capabilities in the council chambers. Our IT team has developed an extensive list of tech-related projects that will be considered as part of my commitment to efficiencies and operations. I've had the privilege to work with quality elected officials, a superb staff, and many engaged citizens. Obviously, I, along with the assessor, auditor, treasurer, prosecuting attorney, and sheriff, have the management responsibility for staff and operations, and the council has the legislative responsibility for code and budget approval. But our roles and responsibilities are ever entwined. I can tell you after 27 months on the job that it is more challenging and more rewarding than I anticipated. We have moved forward over the last two years on completion, or at least made forward progress on some very large initiatives. That work will continue with the support and cooperation of this council and community as we work together to build an excellent quality of life for everyone in Wachem County. Thank you for allowing me to present the state of the county to you this evening.
Thank you for that wonderful report. It's amazing to hear the list of all the things we accomplished at one time together, and hopefully we'll continue to do that in the next couple of years. First item of business for the council this evening is the approval of four sets a minute: the committee of the whole for March 11th, a regular county council meeting for March 11th, surface water work session for March 18th, and a committee of the whole for March 25th. Is there a motion?
I said move.
Mr. Cremon has moved approval of those minutes. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're going to move right into our public hearing, which is on an ordinance of interim allowing marijuana production processing and retailing as authorized by the Washington State Initiative 502 and medical marijuana facilities as authorized under Chapter 69.51A of the RCW. And a number of people have signed up to speak. If you didn't sign up, you certainly will get your chance, but we're going to start with the people on the list. Every person will be given three minutes to speak. If you come up to the microphone, if you'll give us your name, and if it's more complicated than Smith or Jones, if you want to spell your last name, that'd be great. At about one minute in, one minute left, 30 seconds left, our clerk will give you a warning that your time's about up. So the first, I'm going to open the public hearing, and the first people, if people want to come up in line up, and we'll make it go quicker, is Cynthia Sue Ripke, Kutsagowetz, Robert Kutsagowetz, Dixie Schaeffer, and Eric Murta. Come on down.
Do you tell me when to start? Is that what you do?
No, you just go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I've given you my name. I'll give you the reason I'm here, and I do thank the county executive to, for speaking to two groups I see routinely: veterans and the legislative adjunct for 9301, and I serve in a mission here. I've been a site nurse. I'm a registered nurse with an undergraduate, also in sociology, and a master's as a teacher. So I'm here because I have a vision for Wachem County. Actually, I have a vision for the state of Washington, that in several years, that recreational marijuana be repealed. I, as a nurse, have handed packets here on my evidence to prove that, and it does demand diverted, if this is truly a recreational drug. I have stats. I'm not here to wage war. I am here to proclaim life. One of the things I'm here for, the veterans usually don't, a lot of them, their votes don't get to the ballot. You have Bridget Cantrell in this county, PhD. There is nothing good to recreate at all in this or to self-medicate. I see the mentally ill trying to self-medicate with this. I see veterans who are dealing with post-traumatic stress. I have stat after stat here. Just recently, you do realize, in Colorado, the first death related to a marijuana brownie was in Namba, 19, a student who fell off a roof. A father in Seattle is pleading with the schools, trying to find initiatives to stop this role modeling for our children. I can't even understand, well, I can, as a sociologist, how we got here. Vermont, from 70 rehabs to 720 in 10 years. The gateway drug, and a heroin addict will tell you this, not all pot smokers smoke do heroin. But I can assure you, all heroin addicts do pot, and he will tell you, and he's blue, and he says, "I would repeal this immediately." I can give you other examples. Colorado dad medicating to make the mellow baby, five times a day with marijuana. Stat after stat after stat. Dr. Braverman, psychiatrist, New York City, saying, "What don't you understand about dope? It affects your brain. It affects your brain IQ in second-generational children." It actually does something in your brain as a psychiatric nurse to what they call reward a recreational activity. This is recreation. I lived in Florida. I love racing for NASCAR. Don't try to put anything in your brain that's going to make you somber and apathetic or not. I have stats. I've given them to you. I also come, though, as someone to tell you, where there's smoke, there's fire. These people that are out in the county, like my daughter, is a fire person.
30 seconds, please.
And my son-in-law. You are jeopardizing your lives, and if there's anything that I can do to stand strong and push against this, William Roberfoss fought 20 years for the abolition of slavery, but also morality, and how this got caught up with medical issues. I support medical marijuana. I just would hope and implore you to know you have a grave responsibility for the liability that this will cause your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, thank you. I am Robert Kutsagowetz, and I moved from Fairfield, Connecticut, and that's a corridor up I-95 for dope. Marijuana's dope. A friend of mine, good friend, Captain Josh on the Fairfield Police Department. And I have another one, Michael Walsh and Tommy Morozak. If you need statistics, how bad this is, we've had murders, housebreakings. I'm next to Bridgeport. Bridgeport, Connecticut is the sixth-worst city in the United States of America. You don't walk there at night. You go with two or three people together when you go down there. It's filth. It's crime. It's drugs. And if you don't put a lid on this marijuana, it's going to open up something that you can't even conceive how bad it's going to be for the state of Washington. It's going to be in your schools, grammar schools, junior high, high schools, and there's no way you're going to put it out. So if you could put it out before it starts, it would be a total blessing for the state of Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Dixie Schaeffer, Eric Murta, and then Peggy Chase.
I'm Dixie Schaeffer. Everybody here has an opinion on the marijuana issue, but I just feel that marijuana is going to prove to eventually be very expensive, having in terms of lives, health issues, and insurance, you name it, car accidents. As a retired ICU nurse, most often when they brought somebody in that was unresponsive, you know, other than a car accident, even those two sometimes, they would generally do a drug screen, and most of the time, there were multiple drugs in their system. But as generally talking to some of these people, that they started out with marijuana. It seemed to be a tame thing, a recreational thing, but it leads, eventually leads to Marijuana looks to be an entry door to a harsher and more potent drugs. And there are cases, I do believe, where marijuana does have a beneficial benefit to certain, certain event reasons, but they're few and far between. And you probably know people that are on oxygen. You see them on the street or in restaurants, or you maybe have relatives. And technically, oxygen is a drug. Doctor needs to prescribe it for them. Marijuana is a choice, and it's looked at most of the time as recreational. I know several years ago, I think it was Japan, that they used to have oxygen bars that people go to, but your blood can only carry 100% oxygen. You can't carry any more than that. Unfortunately, with drugs, it can carry more than just a little bit. And I just wanted to say that marijuana is mostly used as recreational. How many people that you know that have used marijuana over a longer length of time? Are they, do they show any more wisdom?
30 seconds, please.
Now, are, do they show any more intelligence than what they did before they started? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Eric Murta. I'm fully in support of your motion here, and I really appreciate you changing it from the last time we all spoke and to include the retail establishments and giving them an opportunity to provide this product for the populace of Wachem County in a safe and reasonable location. I sympathize with all these people, but I fully support what all you all are doing tonight, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Chase, then John Hill, then anyone else that wants to speak to this.
Hello, and thank you for listening to me. I'm a grandmother. I've been here in Wachem County for over 30 years, and we live out in the county. We built our own house, and we struggled very, very hard to make it in our, in this county because when we moved here, it was closing Seattle down, and they were going to last, wanted to leave Seattle, turn out the lights. It was very hard to get established here. So I am very concerned about what happens in Wachem County. I'm a grandmother, as I said, and one of my grandchildren is, he is, he's got some brain damage, and so I'm very concerned about the harmful effect of drugs on developing adolescent brains. When my grandson was like two years old, the powers that be said, "Put him in a home. He will never respond to anything. He, that he will never recognize you." Right now, he is getting straight A's in school because of the things that my daughter and I and my husband have done for him. Pot is not my norm. It is not normal in society. It is a horrible gateway to other drugs, and I really, really, I beg of you to please have very, very strict liability laws, very, very strict insurance. When someone is hurt or when someone dies because of pot, it is not that person's necessarily, it's not that person's fault. It could be yours because of not strict enough laws to protect them. The government was established to provide safety and protection, especially for the smallest and the most vulnerable of us, and that is your responsibility. Dope, weed, intoxicating drug, it's a toxin. This, this pot is a poison. It enters the brain of the adolescent, and it does change the brain, and I've seen it in other people. It is a horrible thing. These recreation drugs, quote-unquote, can damage our future because the future of our America is based upon our children and what we allow to have them here. And if you think for one minute that a child is going to listen to his parents when all of the county, all of the country, is saying the opposite, they're just going to look at the parent and go, "Oh, yeah."
30 seconds, please.
Sure. So it needs to be controlled, and, but if it's out in the, in the vastness of our Wachem County, it won't be because we have a lack of the long arm of the law out there. It can't reach far enough to monitor the growers and the sellers and everything. It needs to be centralized, please. It needs a centralized location to be properly monitored and maybe at the court. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is John Hill. You have my sympathy for having to deal with 82 years of propaganda and misinformation to the public that it produced some outraged citizens that really have some educating to do, but really, you know, I can see their concern. But what I wanted to speak to is, you know, thanking you for reconsidering your, your action in the zoning. Some things I'd like to point out, my company here just rented an 8,700-foot building for another purpose at 47 cents plus the tees, a square foot, which I think you'll agree is a fair realtor price for a decent piece of property that's well-kept here in the city, which it was. I visited five people that were advertising to lease to growers, and the average price was $1.25 to $1.50 plus the tees, double. I checked with the National Realty Association. They tell me there's a 4.7% vacancy rate in the commercial properties of, of Bellingham, which I think is pretty good. But I think that, you know, you see, you've kind of forced the people into a situation where they're, we think we're being taken advantage of at double the price. Another thing I'd like to talk to is the idea that you would stop greenhouse owners or small farmers from being able to use their locations is crazy. I've had the advantage of traveling the world. I was in Denver last week for the Cannabis Cup, and I visited about seven grows there. It is the greenhouse people that are setting the standard in this industry for pest control, for disease control, and they have, as they have set their, their industry and the, and the things they were doing before they changed over into marijuana production. So I'd really like to see that ease up and allow these people to, to not only participate in their own greenhouses, but to really, they're going to really have to help a lot of people that have no idea, and their practices and disciplines are going to be what the industry's going to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to us about the marijuana ordinance this evening? If there's anybody else, come on down. We're going to close the hearing.
So I didn't have anything prepared. I talked last time. My name's John Burns, and I sent you an email today. Hopefully you guys got it. But I'm a greenhouse owner, horticulturist, went, got a BS at Colorado State, been in the industry for over 15 years, and applied for a Tier 3 license. My problem with the ordinance is I'm glad to see that you're changing it and listening to the public, but given everyone's certain situation, I believe my operation is very conducive to growing this plant. I grow at very, high volumes of other crops, but I have one residence within the 300-foot buffer. So yes, I could go and get the waiver that you guys are talking about, but worst-case scenario, he says no, he or she says no. I can move what I said on my property, right? Do I want to move it? No, because I move it into more of an outdoor grow instead of a controlled greenhouse grow, where the LCB just recently contacted me and was very, they were very impressed with the operational plan that I furnished from them. So everything I've done up to this point is, I've adhered to it, but the ordinances are kind of messing with my certain situation, and I know what's right for me isn't right for someone else, and I'm not saying that you should change it specifically for me, but those buffers are arbitrary numbers, 300. What's the difference between 300, 200, or 150? 150, I'm fine. 150, I'm fine. 300? No, I have to move it. And then it's, all of a sudden, I don't like the operation plan as much. My neighbors probably wouldn't like it as much. And so I think that you should think on a case-by-case scenario of what's going on in the county, and, I mean, ideally, go from 300 to 150 for my, you know, for my personal satisfaction. But I do believe it is a crop that is meant to be grown in greenhouses, less of a carbon footprint, and I really think you'd need to take a hard look at those farmers out there. Because he's right. It's, we're going to sculpt the industry in the future. It's not going to stay in a warehouse with a bunch of lights on forever.
Thirty seconds, please.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Mann?
I have a question for staff before we do anything. Is that?
Sure.
In order, okay. I just recently became aware of butane hash oil. I don't know if you are familiar with it, but it's basically a process of refining the THC crystals on the plant and making a highly potent mix. Do we have any specific rules on that as far as disposal of any of the raw materials? And then also, it also leads me to the question of if people are doing hydroponics, what kind of water disposal is going to be caused by that and any nutrient-rich waters? And I just found out about these basically in the last 48 hours, so I'm sorry, I'm springing on you at the last second here, but can you just let me know exactly how you, have you researched that stuff? Do you know about it? And how does our ordinance deal with it?
Yes, Nick Smith, Waukesha County Planning Development Services. Actually, the ordinance does not necessarily deal with that. It's actually our fire codes and building codes and health codes that do. We've actually permitted a couple facilities that have hash oil, and the Fire Marshal's fire flow requirements are the ones that are kind of dealing with that. And actually, remark I got from the Fire Marshal the other day was, it's, it's not as bad as he had thought, because there are safe methods to do it and not the ones that you see on a YouTube video that's in a pop can.
Right, right.
But the disposal methods is another one that we're looking at. We did issue a permit just recently, and they had to document and approve the disposal method, and that it was, the solid waste was being brought into the city of Bellingham and at an approved location. So we are monitoring through that, through that, through our other codes, not necessarily just the ordinance in front, but through the other criteria.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So would the hash oil be part of a processor permit?
That's correct. It would just, it's part of a process according to the state law.
Okay. And are we able to certify that?
I'm sorry, we've closed the public hearing.
Oh, okay. What about hydroponic? I, I, I'm sorry, because I don't know a lot about this, growing this stuff, but if we're, if we've got a large water disposal, nutrient-rich water disposal out in some watersheds, that is undesirable. So how do we take care of that?
Well, we're working right now with that with the Health Department. Actually, that's kind of what, this, just this week, I've been trying to get more information from the state. In fact, I sent Councilmember Brenner some information from the Governor's Office of Regulatory Assistance on how much wastewater and how much water is required for these facilities. I don't necessarily believe it needs to be in the ordinance before you today, but it's something that we're, as staff, are going to be worked through through the health codes and ensuring that the disposal methods are.
Right, because I guess it wouldn't matter if it's hydroponic tomatoes or hydroponic marijuana or whatever.
Exactly.
It's still water with nutrients in it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. I move approval of the ordinance. All right. Mr. Mann has moved approval of the ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yeah, I'm going to speak against the ordinance. I, and I'm doing it with all due respect, and I say that sincerely. I think the council's done a good job working on this. My, I'm still not convinced that eliminating the 1,000-foot setback from a cluster of homes, eight or more homes, was the way to go. And that's, that's the main reason why I don't approve this. In other words, we're, I think this is an interim also, isn't it? So we're replacing an interim with the interim that's in place. I think that the interim that's in place is effective and was appropriate and at the time as well or better deliberated by the council, and I'd like to stick with that 1,000-foot setback on the clusters of eight homes or more.
Any other comments? Ms. Brenner?
Um, excuse me. Well, I support the ordinance, and I also, I think it's very important to respect the people who have concerns about this. And I do think that the buffers that we're requiring are going to speak, do speak to that. Also, I just, you know, this is no different than alcohol in that it's for adults only. And there's nothing in here that would, that legally allows anybody underage to be obtaining and using it. I wanted to say that because I have the same concerns about adolescents. I don't think, however, that putting people in jail for possessing and using marijuana is the solution. And I think that many people who maybe don't support it at all, I don't think they would want to see that happen either. So I don't see that we, you know, that there's a whole lot of changes we can make to this. There was one other thing. Go ahead, Ken, let Ken go, because I, there was one other thing I wanted to say.
Mr. Mann?
So I'll, I'm going to support the ordinance, and, you know, I do want to just mention all the fears that we heard from folks about what it does to kids. I, I agree, you know, marijuana, smoking marijuana does mess with your brain, there's no doubt about it. I don't think it is a gateway drug. Actually, I think having it be illegal made it more of a gateway drug. I think now that it's legal, there's sort of that barrier between going from that to the really hard stuff that's really addictive. And I realize that's a subjective opinion, but that, that is how I see it. Ms. Brenner's right. Alcohol is legal. I, I see so many more news stories about alcohol deaths and alcohol violence than I see ever about marijuana. And in fact, it's really not even news when there's alcohol-related violence, but because it's marijuana and it's kind of new, you know, it makes it into some sensational news stories that, that we all read about. So I'm going to support the, the ordinance because I think, think the fears about the locations of the growers and processors in neighborhoods is really overblown and misplaced. I think from an economic development standpoint, we have to deliver certainty to folks, and that's something we struggle with and try to deliver and talk about a lot. But on this ordinance in particular, we've been all over the map, and I think it's time to put the rules in place and let people go to work. And we also have another review of this in six months. It will go through the Planning Commission, and I hope the ordinance stays the same, but it'll certainly be an opportunity for more, more input and a possible revision of some of these setbacks. So I will support it, and I think it's, I think we've been, done an excellent job, actually, of reviewing this ordinance and taking in testimony from all members of the community. And I'm, I'm proud of what we've done, and I, I think it's not exactly what I would have put together, but I will support it because I, I think it represents a step forward.
Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too think that the council put a lot of thought into this ordinance. The fact is, the, the people of Washington State, and even more specifically, the people of Waukesha County, voted to approve the initiative. And the council, in their wisdom and their concern for the community, put a lot of thought, a lot of effort, a lot of focus, along with the, the great assistance from staff in coming up with regulations and guidelines that exceed what the state requires. So we, I believe, have listened to the people, both those communities and residents that have concerns about the processing and the growing operations, as well as the retail outlets. And we've also listened to the people who are engaged in, you know, embarking on getting into the arena of either the growing, the processing, or sales of, of recreational marijuana. So I think we've, we've actually been very even-keeled and have been sensitive to the concerns of, of some of those residents in the, in Waukesha County about setbacks and, and having more safeguards, more setbacks, and more protections for our children and others that, that do have some concerns about the marijuana issues that we're dealing with. So I'm very proud of what the council has done, and I'm, I'm going to support it.
Anyone else? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
No.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes. So that passes six to one with Councilmember Crawford opposed. We're going to move right into our open session. This is where anybody can come down and talk to us about anything you want, other than the coal terminal, for three minutes. And at 30 seconds, you'll get a warning that your time's about out. And it's a, same rules as the public hearing. Come on down, give us your name and spell your last name if it's complicated, and I will open the, open session. Anybody want to speak to us this evening? Go ahead.
Hi. Rhayma Blake, R-H-A-Y-M-A-B-L-A-K-E, from Lemmy Island, 4275 Mesa View. I am here because I'm one of the people who threw my name in the hat. Later on, you'll be picking a person to put on the Life Act, the Lemmy Island Ferry Advisory Board. The board was formed February 2012. Thank you very much, the work of Councilman Weimer and Brenner, supporting that. Going back and reading the resolution that formed the Ferry Advisory Board, I think we did a good job. You did a good job. Thank you very much. It's been two years since it's been in, in existence, and in looking through what the board needs to accomplish, what the committee needs to accomplish and provide you all, I see some things that I'm disappointed haven't happened. First of all, a new fair structure, and I know Councilman Crawford, you and, and Councilman Mann have called for that. A vehicle for ongoing collection of information from ferry riders to see what's working, what's not working. And most importantly, a ferry replacement, long-term planning, parking, transportation to and from the ferry docks, alternative docking locations, alternative funding sources. This is important work that the Ferry Task Force that you all formed in response to the $3 surcharge, they did a tremendous amount of work towards and couldn't do anymore. They only had a six-month period to work on. And I'd like to see Life Act follow through on the work that was started there and coming up with these long-term strategic plans. That is why I threw my name in the hat. However, in a perfect world, you really ought to put both Jim Dickinson and me on Life Act. And I would, at this point, like to encourage you to put your support against Jim, for Jim, and I'm withdrawing my application at this point. I think it is very important for them to have a strategic plan going forward. I will continue on Plick and keep my foot in their back, but I think Jim brings experience from the Ferry Task Force. He helped put that tremendous document together. If you need a digital version, some newer council people.
Thirty seconds, please.
It's on the Plick Ferry website. And I would encourage you to look at that and support Jim. And also, I would encourage you to look at the Gwemus Ferry and what they've done. Compare their operating budget report for 2013 versus our operating budget for the ferry for 2013. It's, there's a lot more transparency, a lot more information there, and much lower operating costs. We wonder why. And they also, on their website, have a ferry replacement report. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Time.
I would encourage you to follow as a model. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Blake, I just wanted to say I received an email that was very complimentary to you and Jim, so thank you for applause.
Oh, thank you.
Scott Hackett, H-A-C-K-E-T-T, 2995 Lumis Trail Road, Custer, Washington. Councilmembers, I'm here tonight for two reasons. First, some of you, some of you may know me already because I've been here before, but there are new members of the council that I haven't met. I am the president of the Waukesha County Granges, which has over 450 members in the county, which over a third of them are, could be classified as small farmers or potential small farmers that aren't currently farming. I bring for you and hand-distributed a copy of the Washington State Grange Legislative Handbook. The Grange is a grassroots organization whose policies are made up from their members, starting with an idea at the local Grange, and set to the Washington State Grange to be voted on by their delegates each year at their annual convention. The Grange is a non-Protestant organization that represents its members, most of which have agrarian backgrounds with rare, with rural roots. These policy statements are intended for legislators in Olympia, as some of you I know have been, or past legislators have probably gotten caught, have seen this before. But the, and, but may apply also for local issues right here in Waukesha County. Two, at our most recent meeting of the Pomona Grange, we passed Resolution 2014-2 titled Water Planning for Water Policies, resolving that the Grange asks that the members of the council follow the RCW 90.82 for water planning for use of the WIRA program for water resources. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And one of the Granges put on a great water forum just this last Saturday. Thank you.
Chris Halterman, Waukesha County. I want to thank you guys for continuing to fund the planning unit. I think that that was very important. I also want to thank you again to continue to fight for the lawsuit to make sure that exempt wells stay a right in Waukesha County. Beyond that, I did want to talk a little bit about the, you've agreed to transfer 1.5 million from the Conservation Futures Funds to a new fund, the Park Special Revenue Fund, AEB 2014-147. The council has verbally admitted that there is too much money in the Conservation Futures Fund. This is not the only special fund which has too much money, and with the constant concern for excess taxes, the high cost of property taxes, et cetera, maybe it's time to consider placing a ceiling and a floor on the special levies to alleviate the need to appropriate taxes or shift them, as some like to say, to other funds that were not authorized by the vote of the people. Beyond that, moving on to AEB 2014-0608, the council's actions to further constrict livestock farmers from creating value-added services for their business, in my opinion, serves a, shows a lack of concern for the depth of understanding of what the farmers asked for. There was a glimmer of reality today when Councilman Brown asked to allow more than three slaughter or packing facilities in the county as administrative allowed uses. The council should not be limiting artificially how many of these facilities are allowed. You've limited the size of the facility, the number of the facilities, and made the processes to plan successfully for this type of operation more expensive and highly unlikely that a small or mid-sized operation would consider starting up in Waukesha County. At the very least, I would ask that you clarify the grandfathering of all the existing slaughter or packing facilities to make sure that the public understands the clarity of your intentions with this particular ordinance. With the increased need of quality, healthy beef, poultry, and pork food sources, Waukesha County could be an important source to provide this to our community and bring added property and local business revenue plus jobs to the area if you have the foresight to facilitate that this happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Newman, Waukesha County. Politics is a messy business. Unlike the private sector, where the CEO and board set the goals and dictate the process, our political system was designed to be bottom-up business. our political system was designed to be bottom-up business, where the voices of many must be listened to. The state legislature recognized this when they set up the WIRA planning, water planning units. Messy, time-consuming, and imperfect. The urge to micromanage can be overpowering. Yet we all know that micromanaging kills innovation, kills cooperation, and does not guarantee good results. You have a group of citizen volunteers who have stepped forward and offered to grapple with the messy business of water planning in our county. They have asked for your financial support. They have asked for an amount based on the financial support that you have given to the joint board, a group of well-paid bureaucrats who have had mixed results in the last three years with their endeavors. The question tonight is not really about the $20,000. It's about supporting citizen involvement. It's about relinquishing the urge to micromanage, and it is about trusting our messy system of many voices and that it will work for all of us. Thank you.
Carl Lupiano, Ferndale, Washington. I just had a quick observation. If you're going, if Waukam County is going to allow people to grow and process marijuana, then it seems only fair that Waukam County ought to allow farmers to grow and process meat. Thank you.
Jim Dickinson, 209 Shore, West, 2094 West Shore Drive, Lemmy Island, Washington. And this is kind of a little bit of a bittersweet moment here because Rhayma is a good friend. Actually, I think she's right. Both of us should be on the board. I'm applying because I have some things that other people that are not representing the board right now. For one thing, I was brought home in the chief quayna on October 14, 1950. I've lived in Lemmy Island virtually continuously since. I've watched systems change. I had four friends, very close friends of my age, who had parents that worked on the, on the ferry. I heard all their stories. Some of the changes that have gone in the Waukam chief over the years have not been pos, or to the ferry system, have not been positive for either the taxpayers or the riders of the ferry. They happen from one reason or another. People change, people quit, and voids were filled. And I think that we need to be looking at some positive opportunities. We can, it's sort of a mix of the old and a mix of the new, and come up with things that work better. Personally, I have, I'm incredibly curious. I'm genuine. Anybody knows me and will tell you that. I'm ethical. I'm looking for positive solutions. I'm not trying to put anybody down along the way or anything else, but I want to try to make things work better. Also, I have a bit of a cold. I have contacts in, from ferry systems, from Bla, from State of Maine to Texas to Lake Champlain to Washington State ferry systems and Skagit County, of course. The, one thing that, the more I research this, it looks to me, the more I find that the Waukam County ferry system is extremely fragile. We are depending on an old boat. We are depending on, that doesn't meet safety standards anymore, that has a number of issues, which would be very expensive to replace, to fix, and even when you're done with that, you've still got an old boat. And, and we have no backup. The Skagit Plan, I went down to the meeting in Gwemas Island. That was the best ferry meeting I've ever been to in my entire life. It was gorgeous. They did a beautiful job.
Thirty seconds, please.
Everybody got their answers. So what I'd like to do is to try to help make this work better, make it work with the people. I did, I had it work fine in the ferry task force. I can't see why it can't here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to us during open session? Last chance. All right, I'm going to close the open session, and we're going to move on to our consent Mr. Crawford?
Oh, well, I was thinking maybe, since there's some things in the consent agenda that might be impacted by our discussion about the purchase of State Street, since that's not really on the agenda tonight, maybe we should, would this be the right time to talk about that?
Yeah, we could pull out numbers three and four, or we could talk about that first if the county executive wants to have that discussion first. Why don't we just have it right up front?
I noticed the Bellingham Herald reporter set up that attention as soon as I brought it up, so.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight concerning the potential acquisition of the State Street property. I've presented to the council three options concerning this potential purchase. The original goals as presented by me for the acquisition of the property were to eliminate the need to renovate and replace the Northwest Annex, to put the county in an ownership position with the morgue, to break apart the building lease and the medical examiner contracts, to utilize the downtown facilities more efficiently due to our reduction in workforce, and to achieve the goal of a permit center. That's what was originally presented last year relating to this potential purchase. Background with this, it was presented as a, as an opportunity. Council gave the executive authority to go out and to do some research on it. We signed a purchase and sale agreement for $2.6 million. We obtained a professional appraisal on it that came in over $3.5 million for the facility. We did a building envelope inventory to assess the functional viability of the heating and air conditioning units, to find out whether the building was built to code, what the wind loads were on it, so on and so forth, and that report came out reasonably well. We also did an environmental review of the site. We did the phase one review, and it was found that there was a service station on the building site at a, many, many years ago, probably in the 50s into the early 60s. We did an environmental phase two on it and did some testing, and we found some contaminated soil along, along State Street, right at the property line, down about 12 feet to about 20 feet, where we, we believe that there was a tank. We did a sonogram of the particular property. There is no tanks in the ground at this particular time, but there is that contaminated soil. Also, on the parking lot, 110 parking space lot, we found one area of contamination that's of very limited scope that, that would need to be cleaned up also. With that said, option one that I brought forward to you was to purchase the building and the parking lot for $2.6 million, to renovate the building exterior and the mechanical as per the professional review of the structure that we've got, and that would cost us approximately $400,000. And the cleanup, although not required, there is no, there's nothing that, at this particular time, that poses a risk of human health, and that's by the Stratum Group, I think that's Dan McChane's group, is Stratum, that did the work on it. Because it is all contained underneath ash fault and underneath the ground, there is no current need to clean it up, but I think it's in our best interest. And, and it is Earth Day today, too, so I'll tie that in. It's also National Jelly Bean Day, for those that might like jelly beans like me. I just had to say it. Anyway, the site cleanup estimated by Jeff Hegidus of our Health Department is up to a $350,000 cleanup. Now, we all know with cleanups is we can't guarantee that, but I would anticipate that it could be as low as 250, could go high as about 450 to get, to get this property cleaned up. So option number one that I've, that I've brought forward would cost between three and $3.35 million. The positives to this is, is that we own the morgue, we obtain 110 parking spots in the downtown core, it breaks the cycle of the medical examiner contract, and it retains the specific offices designed for our WIC program and for the Health Department. This option, although the lowest in cost, still does not solve the goal of having to put money into the Northwest Annex or to replace the Northwest Annex. We still have a need out there that wouldn't be taken care of with just the straight purchase of the building. The second option presented was to continue the lease of the, of the building for the Health Department and the medical examiner, and over the next three years and five months, that would cost us $1 million. As I mentioned today, is, is the million-dollar lease, on the surface appears to be on the high side, but I just want the council and the community to realize that Dr. Goldfogle pays for all utilities, pays for property taxes, takes for repair and maintenance, and takes care of all the janitorial in it. So lights, heat, the whole works, that's included in this cost that we're being charged for the building. But if we leased that, it would be my goal that over the next three years and five months that we take control of, of owning a morgue, and an opportunity to do that would be to possibly look at the Iron Gate facility that was currently, the Humane Societies was in, currently it's vacant at this particular time. A very rough estimate of those costs would be about $1.5 million to, to do the morgue facility. Could be as low as a million, could go as high as two and a half million, but I've got one and a half million on this piece of paper. Because we would have a need for a permit center, if we were to build it out at the Northwest Annex, a 25,000-square-foot building would cost somewhere between $250 and $325 a foot to build. And that would mean that we'd have one and a half into the morgue, and then we would have between 6.25 million and 8.125 million in building to building out at the Northwest Annex. If we were to build a building in the downtown core, we would also have to supply underground or in-building parking, which would drive the costs up considerably more. It would be my understanding, my view of it, that there would be a tremendous amount of pressure from our staff, particularly the court's prosecuting attorney, to take over more of this particular facility because it is getting crowded. So if we were to build a 40,000-square-foot building in the downtown core, it probably would be between a 12 and 16 million dollar project. And I believe that there'd be a lot, a lot of pressure to build even bigger than a 40,000-foot building, and I don't think we have the resources to do that as of today. Or, another option would be to buy an existing building in Bellingham, along with building a morgue, and that could be anywhere from a total cost of six to eight million dollars by the time you've gotten done with that. The positives with this particular option would be that it's, hey, everything is new, state-of-the-art facilities. It eliminates the need for substantial amount of repair and maintenance in the next 20 years. It creates our permit center, eliminates the need to upgrade the Northwest Annex. We become the owner of a new morgue that utilizes the Civic Center and Gerard Buildings more efficiently. If we build it in the downtown core, it will enhance the collaboration between all of the departments of Waukam County Government, and of course, it obviously breaks the cycle of the medical examiner contract and the commitment to the lease. The negative with this is, at a minimum, it's about 3.45 million more than purchasing the State Street building if you would purchase it and renovate it. The option that I believe is in the best interest of the county, and I want everybody to know that this is a business decision. This is not a decision that I'm excited about. If we had the money to build a new office tower or build something new, I think if you would look at that, at the 50-year view of that, that would be really nice if we were able to do that. But I don't think we're in a position to do that right now. I think that we need to look in the next 10 to 15 years in the decisions that we're making in light of the new correctional facility and the sheriff's office that we're going to be needing to build here in the next few years. But option three was to purchase the building for $2.6 million, do a renovation of the building that would cost up to $2.46 million, and then clean the site up at $350,000. Total, that would cost us between $5.06 million and about $5.4 million to do that. The positives are, creates the permit center, eliminates the needs to upgrade or replace the Northwest Annex, we become the owner of the morgue, it utilizes the State Street, Civic Center, and the Gerard Street Buildings more efficiently, we obtain 110 parking spots in the downtown core, and it breaks that cycle of being in a position that we have to lease the building for our Health Department, along with signing a medical examiner contract and signing a lease for the morgue. Of course, the negatives with that, it moves the permit center away from rural Waukam County. The staff and the public are utilizing shared space with the county morgue. Some people might find that not to be of, not, find that not to be appropriate. We all have to realize that the morgue is older and still will require some upgrades within the next 10 years. The sold-out would be between $230 and $250 a square foot. Distance from the courthouse, I think we could utilize it because we have a great number of people here that are looking for parking spots. And the, the location's not, is not perfect, nor is it a high-tech building. But looking at all of our options and taking into account what we need to do in terms of replacing or rebuilding Northwest Annex, the number of staff we have, our need to be able to break this medical examiner contract is, is I believe option three is in the best interest of the county. With that, whatever decision you make tonight is, is I will be on board with, because I feel that we're at a Y on the road here. This is, this is not, this is not something that is that big of a deal, but I think, I think that I've lined it out reasonably well for you to consider it. In the event that you decide at this time that option one would be appropriate, to buy the building and then spend some time in analyzing what the next step would be is, is I would find that to be a reasonable compromise to what my proposal is. With that, I entertain any questions or allow you to, to discuss the options before you.
Mr. Crawford?
Well, as I understand, we've been given three options. I mean, we're not limited to three options, but these are pretty good proposals by the exec, and as I understand it, option one is basically buying the new building and remediating any of the cleanup and not doing the remodel. Option two is not buying the building and all the implications and all the costs associated with, well, where do we go? What do we do? And option three is buying the building as was originally proposed, along with the remodel. I'm going to, and a remodel is a costly remodel. It's about the equal to the price of the building itself. I'm going to move that we pursue option one, and that would be just to simply purchase the building and remediate the, the cleanup portion. But at this time, not foreclose any options right now as far as the ultimate remodel or renovation or moving people from Northwest, so that we would keep the Health Department people in there for the time being, or at least not have any pressure to move them in the short term. And I think the value for the building is at least half just in the parking lot across the street. I think it's a valuable piece of property as well as the, where the building sits. I think we've been demonstrated with a lot of certainty, not 100% guarantee, but a lot of certainty, that the cleanup costs relative to some other cleanups we've done is fairly minimal. It then eliminates the $1 million for the next three years that I was talking about that's coming up here in the consent agenda, although I will be looking for some direction from the executive when we get to that part, depending on the outcome of this vote, how to pursue, proceed with that or not. But in any case, I, I think there's enough compelling reasons that the executive has just given to at least keep our foot in the door, eliminate the lease payments, and have really amounts to two very nice pieces of real estate on both sides of states. both sides of State Street there that the, uh, that gives us the most options to, to move forward.
All right, so let me see if I can restate your motion.
Simply to, uh, recommend option one.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the executive to move forward on the purchase of the State Street property along with the cleanup of any contamination. All right, any discussion of that? Mr. Brown?
Um, given, first of all, I, I think option one is, is a great idea, it, it gives you the option to do option three later if you want, and, um, I think the, you know, the quick numbers is, at the current rate we're paying, uh, rent we're paying, if you subtract out, you know, best guess for, like, uh, you know, power and janitorial, we'll get our money back within about nine years. So, um, that, that's a pretty good cap rate for anybody who's in real estate. Uh, the other way of looking at this is, it's three years rent at a million bucks, plus a million and a half dollars to build a new morgue if we didn't have access to that one. We're basically the same price of buying the building, so, again, I like that math. Um, the only thing I would, uh, perhaps suggest is that until we know what the highest and best use of that land is, and it may be something we don't choose to redevelop for, say, a decade, um, if the highest and best use turns out to be, build a, a whole new structure, we're going to have to excavate the site anyway to, to put in foundations, and so I would delay doing the cleanup until we've decided what the long-term use of the building is, other than, otherwise, other than that, I would agree with Mr. Crawford's suggestion.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't agree. I think that is going to be, uh, a problem property that's going to keep costing the county money. Um, I'm really surprised at what's been stated as what it's going to cost us to, to clean up the property, to renovate, to do all these things. Um, I don't consider myself an expert, but I've been through enough properties we've had to clean up and renovate. This doesn't even fall in, anywhere near what they generally cost us. Um, it may look like we're getting money back, but if we, if we operate it, it's still going to have to be staff, they'll still be, we're going to be paying, you know, for people to, to be in that building. Um, I think that the, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna take over a morgue, I'm not sure that's the best idea, but if we're going to, I think, uh, uh, Iron Gate is a better idea. I definitely do not want to see the Northwest Annex just be allowed to continue to deteriorate. Um, maybe I just have a suspicious nature, but it seemed like for many years, that's been the goal, is to let it deteriorate, and every time there's been repairs, something gets worse, and, uh, and, and I'm, I've seen that building close up for so long that I can tell you, I've, when they put a new roof on, it got worse. So, I mean, that's something that should have been fairly simple, but, um, I just think this is a, I think it's a very bad idea, and I think we're getting numbers that are way too, that are not realistic.
Mr. Mann?
I, I, I don't know exactly which numbers you're referring to, but I, I've looked at the numbers, I think they're very realistic, and I think as Mr. Brown and Mr. Crawford have both pointed out, it makes sense in terms of the savings that we get from not paying rent out to somebody else, the cost of not having to build a morgue, the parking spaces do have value and will have value. I think buying this building and trying to bring down the costs, the estimates on the remodel is the one thing I'm, I'm, I am concerned about. I, I think the estimates for the remodel are too expensive, and I'd really like to see us bring down that number, but as far as purchasing the building, that's why I like option number one, and I, I think it's, at this price, with everything we've, all the information we have, it's a sound investment, and, uh, I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Cremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, I'm really torn and conflicted on this because, obviously, the, the executive and his administration have done a lot of work on this, uh, there really is no silver bullet or optimum option here. Uh, but I do have some concerns with, of all, all the three options that we've been given, I'd have to say that option one is probably the most palatable and probably makes the most sense, but I do think there's a lot of nebulous numbers here that, that I am concerned about. I mean, we're, we're talking about, you know, the, the city of Bellingham and the port of Bellingham did an exhaustive, uh, study and spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars just trying to ascertain what the cleanup costs were going to be when they acquired the, the Georgia Pacific property, and I, they missed the mark by about 300% and in terms of dollars, it wound up being literally, uh, a few hundred million dollars more than, than, than they anticipated. Uh, and so, I, I don't think that our costs are going to be off, maybe percentage-wise, well, might be off that much, but we're talking about much lower dollar figures. But it is, it, it is a nebulous figure, and then when you add in the negatives about the morgue having to be replaced within 10 years, or, well, is that within one year? Is that within two years? Is that, is it going to be 10 years from now that we're going to be doing the, uh, you know, the cost for upgrading, uh, a rather old and antiquated and probably somewhat obsolete morgue? Uh, and then we underutilize the Civic Center building that we have already purchased and have already invested taxpayers' dollars into, into that, as well as the Gerard Building. So, as I say, there, there's no real clear choice here, and, and I'm, as I say, I'm wondering, is there even a choice here that I feel comfortable making at this time? So, um, I'm, I'm reluctant to select any one of the three options that we've discussed after, you know, further pondering and, and thought about this, and, um, I'm, I have some deep reservations about any one of the, the options, actually. I, I, I think it would be prudent, before we go down this road, uh, with, with option one, is to, first of all, ascertain what, what kind, what the cost would be, a, a, a little bit more of the, of due diligence, a little bit more, and then also a little more focus and, uh, rifling towards an alternative site within the city of Bellingham. I know there are a couple of buildings that, that might be available, I know for a fact that there is one building, one facility that, that, that is available. Uh, to my knowledge, none of the county council members have, have toured or looked at that particular facility, and I'm just wondering if, if, if we might delay this and ask, uh, Dr. Goldfogle if he'd be willing to, uh, give us a little more time to do the due diligence, because there's, there's a lot of money at stake here, and, and I know that at one time we discussed about a, a time crunch with Dr. Goldfogle, and by the way, I, I'm not trying to infer in any way that, that, that the doctor is trying to unload a, a pig in a poke, but, uh, in fact, I think we were very fortunate to have Dr. Goldfogle be our medical examiner, I think he's one of the best, not the best, medical examiner in the state of Washington, but that, that's not the issue here. Uh, the issue is, is finding a facility that's going to serve the needs of the, of the county and, and maximize our, whatever expenditure, uh, we make in the most efficient and effective way.
All right. Well, I actually was, uh, in favor of, supported Executive Laos, option number three. We, we have a million dollar lease coming at us that we need to decide on by May 1. We have a significant number of issues with the Northwest Annex that we're going to have to spend money on, uh, so I was in favor of purchasing the building and moving a, ahead with the remodel and try to put some of those issues behind us. Option one that is on the table in front of us doesn't preclude that, it just gives us some more time to think about the remodel of that building, um, so I, I'm going to support, uh, the motion on the table. Anyone else? I guess, uh, this is, uh, you want to call the roll on this, I guess?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to propose a friendly amendment to Mr. Crawford's motion, which is that there's not, we don't immediately require the cleanup, we leave that until we work out what we're going to do with the property longer term.
No, I would not accept it as a friendly amendment. For me, the, the, there's an, although it's not legally required, I think as a responsible property owner, as we have done with other county properties, uh, we need to own, uh, properties that represent, uh, responsibility when it comes to, uh, environmental issues. There, that said, I realize there may currently be other county properties that we have not chosen to pursue that, but in the scale, or at least my understanding of the scale of cleanups, this is really minimal. You know, this is the kind of thing that really someone with a backhoe and a dump truck could do very quickly. The reason, though, why it's, you know, somewhere between a third and half a million dollars is because there are so many regulations on what you do with this stuff and how it's handled and how it's pulled out of the ground, and then all of the testing that goes along with it, that, uh, you know, the idea that it's a, uh, can be done, you know, quickly with a guy with a backhoe and a dump truck, it quickly becomes a half a million dollar project, and I understand that, having seen how cleanups go in other places, but, uh, I am, I have little or no interest in acquiring this property and postpone, uh, with a known, uh, cleanup effort that needs to be made and then holding on to that without doing it. I, again, I understand the executive has presented that's an option, uh, there's no legal requirement that we clean it up, but I, I'm not interested in owning that if we don't clean it up.
And I'm not suggesting not to clean it up. What I'm suggesting is that to clean it up involves basically digging a hole, taking the earth out, and then getting rid of it. My understanding, and the executive can, can correct me if I'm wrong, is that this, it's not currently posing any threat, that if we don't do anything at the moment, it's not, it's not causing any downstream damage, inaction is not hurting anything. If we dig it up now, fill in the hole, and then go back later and dig it up again because we decided to build a new structure there, we're just duplicating the work and spending the money twice. That's, that's my only reason for delaying it until we know what we're going to do with the property.
I guess I'm just saying I won't sleep well if I know that we've made a purchase of a property that we're going to sit on, a known, uh, uh, issue like that.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Crawford that, uh, that, uh, I, I believe we're, we have the responsibility to, to, uh, do the cleanup as soon as we take ownership. Um, I also think that it's, it's smarter to do it in today's dollars than to put it off in the future, and we don't know what kind of escalation of these kind of cleanups can bring in the, in the years to come, so I think it's smarter to, to spend the money now and do the cleanup, uh, as soon as possible.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to authorize the executive to move forward with the purchase of the State Street property along with the cleanup of any contamination. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that passes five to two with Councilmembers Cremmon and Brenner opposed.
So now, I'll, I'll ask, going into the consent agenda, do we remove the lease agreements or do we go ahead and approve those because the sale is going to take longer and we need to get a lease going? I, I wasn't sure where we go with this.
I would, uh, ask that the council approve the leases. We're not going to be able to consummate this purchase by May 1 or April 30th, and, uh, I've already with, uh, under executive authority have extended these contracts by two months, and my con, my, my executive authority as, uh, as a percentage of the whole runs out a couple days after the 1st of May, so we have an obligation to pay, uh, Dr. Goldfogle until the purchase is, uh, taken care of.
Then I guess I would just want to ascertain that entering into a lease agreement, uh, the purchase will, in fact, cancel it with no additional cost whatsoever.
Right, the, uh, the leases transfer to the new owner, so we'd be transferring our leases to us, so it really, uh, negates it, and part of the real estate transaction that would be, uh, that we would wipe those out.
All right, then, uh, the, on the consent agenda, the, um, Finance and Administrative Services Committee, Committee today met and considered items one through 13. Um, just for the record, those, uh, lease agreements were item, uh, three and four within that, and, uh, they were all recommended by the committee for approval, three to zero, and I would so move.
Ms. Brenner?
Um, I'm requesting to remove number one.
Okay, we'll pull out number one and do that separately. Any other requests? All right, so we're voting on consent agenda items number two through 13. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let, those pass unanimously. Okay, back to number one.
And I'll move, uh, like I said, the, uh, committee considered item number one, which was the removal of a structure at Lake Wattem Park, um, and the cons, committee recommended that three to zero, and I would so move.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, um, I would like to see that structure not removed, and it, we don't have to, I mean, we're getting very little for it as a rental anyway. I think it would make a good, um, storage building, it's, I think it, I do believe it's structurally sound, um, but I also think, I don't even like the idea of leaving the lawn there. Uh, you could leave that building right where it is, um, either get master gardeners in there or some, and I'd be glad to help do it. There's plenty of native plants that could be planted there that would, you know, fill that in. I, I guess my first concern is not a picnic area for people. I don't like the idea of bringing more people into the Lake Wattem watershed to begin with, and I don't think this is something that needs to happen. Like, um, we're spending an awful lot of money on the watershed right now, and this is one of those little teeny token things we could do.